Okay, so it's six o'clock. I'd like to open up the meeting. And I have one adjustment to the agenda. The listers have a letter to us asking for an extension for the time for the 2019 grand list.
And I'm guessing that this is a regular thing because it always was before.
It's pretty, pretty common.
Pretty regularly. They always ask for extensions.
And I guess the, actually, why don't we deal with it right now? So, and it's pretty much the same reason that was mentioned before. They're asking for an extension to August 4th, 2019. And the reason that they're asking is that, as they've stated here, our remaining visits are to summer camps or homes where work has been done, and the non-residents have not been responding to phone calls. So we would like this extension to be sure we can catch up with these people as they arrive at their summer homes or camps and have, would have time for their grievance process. So, so they're asking for an extension to August 4th. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, please for us all to sign.
Doesn't really affect our tax bill date, does it anyway?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Well, next time, the next one will.
If we get another one of these, it could be getting closer, but we exacerbate our go have any cash problem.
So, any public comment?
Public.
Griffin, you got anything?
Anything you want to say?
Laura? Okay.
Steams of outrage.
And then, we aren't able to approve the bills to the town, and we also won't be having a town treasure report. Brandy has a family emergency that she's dealing with, so we'll do that at a different day, yeah. Let's see, have you guys had a chance to look at the minutes? Actually, Brian, it would be you and I from the end of May?
I read them, yeah.
You read them too? Okay, good.
Yeah.
I think they're, I think they're in your pile right there.
Over there.
So, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes. Oh wait. That would be June 10th. This is, the agenda is incorrect. I forgot to change the date.
Nobody picked up on it?
No, nobody did.
Is it all our fault?
Yeah. I hope we're still legal.
You get to court with that one, and they go, "Really?"
Right.
Just one nature is that?
Uh, should be two.
One of those two?
No. There it is.
Oh, right there.
You can hang on, you can hang on for, for the notes if you want. We just got to make sure.
Yeah, transfer them over or something else.
We need to give it to Brian. Diana, so this is the 24th of June.
Just the Wi-Fi number.
So, Diana?
Yes?
We are ready for the town clerk.
Didn't hear a crash at the end of that.
Put that in the listers' mail.
These are our signed minutes, if you want them.
Okay, we'll take those.
Probably walk off with them.
And, we're gonna sign this.
The animal, yeah.
Animal control.
So I know Kim talked to you, I talked to Kim also. He read this, he said it's pretty much what they extend every year. He was fine with it without any changes, so.
Yeah, instead of charging us $500 a year like they did for a long time, they just charge per animal brought in. And last year, we just got the bill, and it was like less than a couple hundred dollars. I think it was one dog and one cat.
So, would Kim be the town?
No.
No? Okay, so, then I guess as the chair would be.
They should be alright, yeah.
So, I'm good with this. Kim's okay with it.
They'll also want to know, they usually ask who the animal control officer is.
Do you want to write that on here? Do you want me to write it on?
I can do that.
Okay.
This sheriff's thing, did I hear anyone, did that ever come back?
Yeah, that's on the agenda. Did it ever come back?
Yeah, I think we, I think you saw it.
No, I don't think we've, we've seen it. You, I remember an email from you to have it on the agenda.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. So... This is the proper time, do you want to do that?
Sure. So, let me just see what they're...
I think in the cover letter, he mentioned that their hourly rate is going up a little bit.
Okay, let's see. Fee shall be 29.25 per hour, and will cover all related expenses for the hourly wage of the deputy, including workman's comp, on, blah, blah, blah. Overtime and holiday rate will be invoiced at 43.88 cents per hour, and the mileage charge is .625, I think is what it has been. This is for the fiscal year, new fiscal year coming up. Okay, so the department furnishes deputies for blank hours per week. I know they never have furnished what we request.
We can't really estimate. They, they called us and said, asked us to fill in the amount that was budgeted, so.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna put a question mark.
As many as you can.
Yeah, $5,000 worth.
Which is usually about four a month, unfortunately. So, anybody else want to just quickly look at this? Yeah, just check it over. It's pretty much the same as it has been.
So this just sets the hourly rate?
Sets the hourly rate, mileage rate, and holiday overtime, which, you know, hardly ever happens here.
You ever see the sheriff's department, not any fire?
Occasionally, if they're here, they will.
Yeah.
So it's nice, I would probably, I'd like to have them around more, but.
Yeah, well, that's, we originally requested more hours, and we actually upped the budget.
Right, and I explained that to someone. I said, "We've got more time to pay for than they ever bill us for." So it's, we've tried, I don't know what you're supposed to do.
And we, we did contact them a few years, a couple of years ago, because it was obvious that they weren't, you know, meeting the hours that we had requested, and the, Sam Hill, the head sheriff, just said that they don't have the manpower.
Right.
They have, they're having a hard time getting people to do this, so.
So, yeah, one year they have the budget to 7,500, and they need to spend it.
They need to spend it.
Yeah, we were hoping that maybe they could be out on County Road or somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah.
Sign both copies, and then they'll sign and send them back.
Oh, both copies, okay, alright, so, 24th of June. So, yeah, we just get what we can on this, as far as this contact. They do occasionally serve summons for, not summons, but whatever, you know, if there's something that needs to be officially given to someone, they'll do that for us.
One signed copy.
Did you date that one?
I did, I think I dated them both.
Okay, so what else? So there's an election tomorrow, but I'm gonna, Brandy won't be here, so I, and Laura has to work at her other job, or go to school or something. She doesn't do Tuesdays. So I will probably put up a note that the office might open a little later, as long as a ballot clerk show up at before nine and get things in order. I guess I could say they could maybe call me, you know, Arlene has a cellphone. Is there reception down there?
Yeah, she can log on to the fire department and stuff.
So if they have any questions, they can call. She's gonna be on the nine to 12 tomorrow. And then, in the evening, it's gonna be a little complicated. There are three articles on the pink ballot, which are the ones that get counted in the town.
Here, here.
And so I've got Alberta from Hardwick made up a chart, you know, like a tally sheet. So Mary, Jim, Jimmy, and Jane, Noel, Miranda are gonna stay here and count those, and then I'm gonna have to find some Board of Civil Authority members to go to Hardwick, because that's gonna be a little more complicated. There are five questions on that ballot. So Patrick is gonna go, and I'm gonna go, and if anybody else wants to go, it's not gonna be just turn around and come back in half an hour like we usually do.
Oh, really?
It'd be a little longer.
So the ballots that need to be counted in Hardwick, they need to be counted once they're in Hardwick?
Right, right, right. They have to be co-mingled first, and then counted, yeah.
Do you have a timeframe? What time that's gonna, the ballots close at seven?
Yeah, and then, I don't know. I have no idea how many people are gonna vote. Maybe not too many.
Right. I mean, I could, I'd be willing to do that.
You sure?
Yeah.
We do everything else.
I'll call, so I can't commit to anything.
Yeah, I'll try to get out there.
Okay.
So what time should we?
Well, show up at seven o'clock at the town hall and...
The town hall in Hardwick?
Yeah, no, this one, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll carry the ballots out there.
Okay.
And co-mingle them.
Yeah, right, yeah. So I had to go down and, I had to go buy some more padlocks today, because I need two ballot boxes. One of them Brandy had borrowed for her event, her party. I didn't think I was gonna get that back, so I went and bought a new pad, a couple new padlocks. But then Michaela showed up at the town hall and returned the ballot box, so, and we have two extra padlocks.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's okay. You shouldn't have to scramble around for something important like that. Yeah, if we showed up in, in Hardwick and the box was unlocked, we'd probably, I don't know, throw out the whole election.
They probably would, that's probably what they would have to do. Officially.
Okay, so...
Or at least at Woodbury, probably. We'd have to redo it another day.
That's funny.
Now, once you co-mingle them, we know.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
Good luck picking those out.
Quick, co-mingle them before they...
Okay, what else? Let me bring my agenda.
Just, anything new with the store, I guess? That's the other part that we usually...
Hmm, no. I did email, I got an email from Laura, and I said, you know, "Please, aren't there, isn't there any progress?" And she said something about some administrative something.
Chris is getting pretty frustrated that this is all kind of, kind of wait to clean out the brook until after the building's down.
We flooded, he flooded again this last weekend.
Yeah, flooded again.
Oh, really?
He has permission to move the, you know, if he wants to move some of those stones that are, you know, between the culvert and...
Just up above, where behind Ronnie's, he took me aside and showed me a bunch of the stones that have fallen in there. So he's gonna have work to do, he's gonna do, but, yeah, he was talking to me about coordinating that when we fixed the bank up above.
Yeah, I don't know.
He wants to know, yeah, that's what I told him. I said, "We don't have a timeframe for that right now."
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything on that yet.
If you go behind his shop there, the stones have all fallen in the brook, and you can't walk behind the building anymore.
A lot of the ones have pushed up, the granite that he had behind his building.
And a lot of it's down behind Chris's, on the other side of the brook too, the same thing. The banks kind of riprap, all those stones have gone through the culvert and they've down behind.
So were that down for last Thursday? Did Chris get flooded again? That's surprising, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's all, the brook is so full, you know, so that there's, it doesn't take about three inches of water, and it's running around as properly again, so.
Yeah, the town has a...
Are we allowed to go in there and pull that stuff out?
I ain't gotta...
The town has a perpetual easement on, to go back there, it was signed years ago by Grove.
Yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
And Doug Aronson and Bailey, I guess, Frank.
Yeah, it's on the title, it's on the deed to the blue house, yeah.
Yeah, saying that the town has the right to go in there and do flood control measures, but we shouldn't have to. I mean, we should be redoing the whole thing within months.
Does their excavator have a thumb on it?
I'm not sure what a thumb is.
Well, where they can grab something?
I don't think so. I don't think they have it.
I was gonna say, if you need, they can go in and pick out the...
Right, but we do, we do have permission from Jerran Board to, you know, as long as it's not greater than 10 cubic yards, I think.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's not.
It's not gonna be, you know, on paper.
And I went and looked at it, you know, a lot of the stones are, you know, you could just get in there with a good pair of boots or whatever, and just pick them up and throw them to the side, so there is at least a...
But there's a lot of it.
There is a lot of it, yeah.
The brook is filled up.
Yeah, it's filled up.
It is full.
It has been a problem this year. We've been flooded twice at the firehouse in Elton. It's just this spring, it's been really wet, and probably freezing.
Then the other thing is, what do you do with it when you dredge it out of the brook? Where do you put it?
Right.
Do you put it in the park? Do you put it in the back lawn?
We'd probably have to haul it away.
Gotta haul it somewhere.
And sort of, if they had a thumb on that excavator, they could get in there and pull some of that stuff out.
I'm pretty sure they don't. I could check and see. I've never, the only thing I've ever seen on that excavator is a bucket.
Yeah, I know what it is, a little arm that comes down, or you can reach in there and grab some of those big stones.
Yeah, like a pincher kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could get in across the park, on the very back of that, because then they could access probably three quarters of what needs to be cleaned out.
Yeah.
Turn it around, dump it into a dump truck, and get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah.
That would help some.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So state the way the federal government shuffle.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got about three, I had, you know, we keep a semi-official rain gauge for lake monitoring program, and about three inches of rain in about three hours through Saturday.
That's what it came down, yeah. There was a lot of rain.
Yeah.
Was it that last week?
Last Thursday.
Thursday.
Really?
Oh, man.
I, I, you know, drove down to Berry. I had to, you know, what, you know how the pavement gets worn where people drive?
It gets rough, yeah.
There was water running down the little channels from the tires.
Right, I had a doctor's appointment, and I turned around when I got to Bragg Farm, and I said, "I'm gonna go see my mother too," and I said, "My mother wouldn't want me driving."
I had my wife who's going as fast as I thought I was going, about 30 miles per hour.
And then the truck come in the other way.
The bucket way it come down. It just, you just kept going harder, harder, harder.
So he can find an excavator, it's okay to dig it out?
Yeah, if you had an excavator with a thumb, yeah, if you've got the permission to do it, I'd see.
I think so. I could send you the email again. I had it with me at our...
That's maybe second fear is all of a sudden you're in there and the state tries to find you $10,000.
I, you know, I had it at the last meeting, and I took it out, and tonight it's on my table over the house, but I think it was 10 cubic yards, as long as it wasn't more than that.
But then he'd have to pay for it himself.
Yeah.
He'd have to pay for it himself, yeah.
But if he waits, I mean, if it doesn't happen again for two months.
If it stops having a gull washes.
Yeah, really.
We could try to include whatever, you know, this project in restoring the bank. I did go look at that bank after Thursday's rain, and it didn't wash out from the brook, but water coming off the pavement has washed more of the gravel away, and it's starting to show where the ledge is underneath there.
Yeah, I can see the ledge.
It didn't undermine the pavement.
Still hasn't gone under the road, has it?
No.
No, it's pretty much still straight down.
Pretty much straight down, yeah. But you could tell just by the channels that the erosion this time on that opening was from the water coming off.
Yeah, running it down, because once it has a place to go, it'll start eating it out.
Yeah, so...
That's on the upper one.
Yeah, the upper one. I didn't, I didn't look at the lower one.
So are waiting there, is waiting for the state to?
Waiting for this, somebody came and looked at it, they're doing some kind of report. I do have a, an application into VTранs for the VTранs Town Highway Emergency Grant. I sent that to Shawna.
So it's good that we didn't use our VTранs money on something else? Or was that other money only for paving?
That would have been a separate, that would have been only for paving, that's a whole separate thing. So I sent in the application, it was an application letter that I sent in, and she acknowledged that she had the letter, she said she was working on the letter I sent, and I've sent two emails kind of asking her if she's heard anything from the people that came and looked at it, and she said she hasn't yet. There may be, I sent another email this morning, and I, you know, working this afternoon, I got home just in time to have a sandwich and a cup of tea, so I didn't open up my computer. There might, there might be a response from her, from the letter that I sent this morning. But I'm pretty sure that we'll qualify for a grant, and...
Hopefully get it figured out before fall.
Right, yeah.
We'll be doing the store and the bank project in November.
Right. So what, you know, what she's waiting for is their report on the recommended fix for that spot, and then also an estimate of what it's gonna cost. And then we do, I did mention in the letter, the paving in the village, a couple of culverts that got plugged with wood debris and overran, so, and we could, you know, I didn't mention the stream, but that, the damage, you know, the stuff that's in the stream was washed down from...
From above, yeah, from the washout.
Yeah, so...
So it should qualify then, because it is directly a result of?
Yeah, it should, yeah, yeah, just didn't think of it. You know, it's not like actual physical damage, it's more, you know, the brook is filled up with rock, and it's causing the brook to flood really easily.
Yeah, if you had permission, you could probably have Chuck go over there and do some of it at least.
It's true, yeah.
Big stuff out.
Yeah.
Get the big stuff out, pull it off to the side at least, so the water...
Take it back up, build it over the bank.
He said, like, he said, "It's so full, you know, the gravel's like, come up like this, so now it's this much to the top of the stream bank, just normally, and there's a lot of material in there now."
Yeah, yeah. And you figure that just the gravel that came down from the bank was whatever else was coming down the brook.
Is it the kind of stuff that will be used for riprap when we do the stream restoration eventually, you think it's like?
It's, well, what I saw was more like 16-inch cutlery.
Round stone.
Round or cubic, you know.
Yeah, a lot of rock.
A lot of stuff in there. It's, I saw the same, we would overlook that when it was gonna flood there, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah, it wouldn't really have worked for the riprap, I think. But it would be a good fill somewhere, I mean, it'd be great, we could fill a hole at the store.
Fill for where it's for our store, yeah, yeah. Guess the town wanted to take it out and save it, they couldn't take it out and just move it around to the other side of the store.
Yeah.
Dump it out where the tanks used to be.
Yep, yep. I should get my wheelbarrow moving again here.
Need a big wheelbarrow.
Oh, Peter cleared out a culvert off the clock on Thursday, coming home from County Road where they fixed that.
He mentioned that to me, yeah.
Where they fixed the road.
Yeah.
It was starting to go over the road again.
Yeah, yeah.
So he happened to see it, and was already soaked from working outside all the time.
Myself, just you.
Yeah, he'd been, he'd been working on a roof all afternoon in that downpour, he was on his way home.
Wow.
That, yeah, that's something I wanted to talk about. We're having trouble just with with forest debris from the brooks that run into the culverts.
Yeah, I've been seeing it.
Yeah.
The lakes are full of it too, they're all sticks, and I went swimming yesterday.
I stopped by to check out the, you know, the Falls County Road Greenwood Lake culvert, 'cause I was coming back from Hardwick, I think, and I, you know, I usually like to drive the back road back home, and I'd just stop and take a look at it, and it was all pretty much covered over with branches again, probably from the rain that we had on Thursday.
We keep getting those gull washes, just loosening and all that stuff.
And what it does is, it picks up dead wood, you know, who knows how far down the brook it's coming from, and then it hits at the culvert, and that was the same thing.
And we've, and tracing trees on the power lines, it's been six or seven of those.
Yeah, and it's the same thing that Peter's done with that other culvert over, I can't remember.
Well, it's good that he stopped and did that, driving by.
Well, he knew he was gonna be working the next day, and he said, "There's gonna be damage other places, so we can stop it before it's a problem."
Yeah.
Okay, so I can share that with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take the vote.
So we've done our...
I haven't read that thing, yeah.
We've done our contracts, so let's take a look at this conflict of interest policy. So this, just for the record, this is something that Laura, Laura discovered.
It's in the VLCT, CTC, or key thing.
Was this something that the state legislature passed some time ago, or how did, where did the July 1st deadline come from?
VLCT's website.
Oh, so this is something that they're actually requiring?
Yes. I always go on there for training.
So the VLCT?
Website itself.
Okay. I was gonna look, remember we had the issue in my position, that we don't have a policy, so it's kind of left ambiguous. I don't want to be ambiguous.
So, check and make sure you have all the things.
I think I have it all.
Because I, mine is kind of mixed up, but I think everything's here. So, you know, I read through this, it's pretty much boilerplate conflict of interest.
Yeah, pretty standard stuff.
Stuff, yeah, yeah, nothing, and there's nothing that really jumped out at me. Laura has gone through it and, and put in the town of Woodbury in the appropriate spot.
It's been vetted by the VLCT.
Yeah, this is the...
Yeah, that's all, that's everything they did.
Yeah, this is their template.
So once we sign off on this, every town employee gets a copy?
No, this is, this is more for elected and appointed officials. We have, we have a conflict of interest policy in the personnel policy for town employees.
For town employees.
And we have used it in the past. I mean, there are different parts that are in the personnel policy that, like the sexual harassment part of the personnel policy, we have, you know, copied that and sent it to everybody who was appointed or elected in town. But this is basically designed for elected and appointed, statutorily appointed officials in the town.
The one I read this to, I read through the VLCT handbook stuff on this, it's still, there's no remedy to have an elected town official, because there is, I was having this covered, that all of us are elected town officials, Brandy's elected, Diana's like, none of us have oversight over the other.
Right.
So, you know, Brian violates it, all I can do is bring it up at the next town meeting and say, "Well, Brian, you know, whatever he did, or whatever Paul did."
Should do this, yeah.
Right, so it just, to me, it's a, it's a behavior that we're agreeing to abide by. Gives us a basis for when someone walks in like Michael and accuses someone of a conflict potentially, you know, sometimes they're obvious, sometimes they're not so obvious.
Yeah, in section 11, the enforcement, you know, there really isn't...
There's not much you can do, is what I read.
Not much we can do, yeah.
Because again, any elected town official is only, only overseen by the people who elected them.
Yeah, basically, about the only thing you could do is request that they resign.
Yeah, and they could say, heck with it. We went through this in the town, was it Coventry? The town clerk refused to resign.
Yeah.
And they had a battle going on for four or five years, and went to court and everything, and they said, "Nope, it doesn't want to get done, and not until reelection time."
Yeah, we went through this with our former zoning administrator, and we, you know, basically, we had to...
That was quite a process.
Yeah.
I think, I think midstream in that, huh?
Yeah.
And that was an appointed official.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and the zoning administrator and the zoning board of adjustment have special, special statutory procedure for removing them. The town had to basically prove just cause. And as far as appointed officials, I don't know if we can...
It also gives you a list of incompatible offices too.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we have, any organization should have, so you know, you don't put someone in the spot that...
That, I stuck on the end of the policy, because I knew that we have that, and...
Well, it makes sense.
It comes from VLCT.
Yeah, because fire department bylaws, we have incompatible offices, because you can't have someone who can approve at an expense, writing a check, for example.
Yes.
Checking offices.
You can't be married, the approver and the writer can't be married, tweets, and those type of things.
So does this sound okay, or any objections at all, or anything that we, we would want to add? We, you know, it says by July 1st, but if, if there is some changes that we would like to make, or, you know, we can, we don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to have something.
Yeah.
What gives us a guide if you're looking at doing something, is this ethical or not?
But here, here's the part that I was thinking with the zoning administrator, it's under Article A and Section B. The failure of an appointed public officer to recuse himself or herself in spite of a conflict of interest. Whether real or perceived may be grounds for discipline or removal from office. Certain appointed public officers such as a zoning administrator and members of the zoning board of adjustment. Or development review board, um, may only be removed for cause. And after being afforded with procedural due process protections, including notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard, which is what we went through.
And I can see why that, because having worked in New Hampshire as a code official. We were beholden to the select board in that town, the fire chief was the fire inspector, because it was done by town. And stuff like that went on, they'd just say, well, that's select, and so and so's house or store, you can't inspect there. And so what they would do is if they went ahead and did it, that's why that's in there, say, I'll fire the. The inspector, well, you can't fire the inspector because that has to go to court. That's why I think those positions are the way they are. Because you, there, there's a, there's a plenty of ground for someone to. Exercise undue influence and then try to get rid of someone who didn't obey.
Okay, so there is, um, yeah, and again, I'm, I'm reading section eleven again, that. There are four things that the select board can do, if there is a conflict of interest. And but, and part four of part A, it says, upon majority vote in an open meeting, the Woodbury Select Board may request, but not order. That the offending public officer resigned from his or her office. And then part B, enforcement against appointed officers. The Woodbury Select Board may choose to follow any of the steps articulated in Article eleven A. In addition to or in lieu of any of those steps, the Woodbury Select Board may choose to remove an appointed officer from office, subject to state law.
Follow the.
We'd have to follow the proper.
So your appointed ones, you do them in the hearing, your elected ones, you just would have to make it aware at a meet, at a town meeting if they're being reelected. I watched, again, go look at the public, that was horrible for those people.
She wouldn't show them the papers.
Wouldn't refuse to turn over the budget, refused to, this went on in court forever and it just kept coming down, she's elected.
You would think if there was an elected official, that there would be a process where maybe you held a special town meeting.
You could, I suppose.
It doesn't, I don't know if, it doesn't.
Well, what was going on is they would, she'd be reelected every year. Whatever the term was, so you're just, nothing you could do and then. You'd have to show, in order to do something legal, you'd have to show that there was.
It was a small town.
Yeah.
Real small town, so there wasn't a lot of voters and she had support.
They liked the person. Because you, these things happen, or you get a turf war or a personal conflict. So sometimes you, oh, they just don't like each other, so I'm gonna vote her back in, I'm not against that.
So, um.
Changing the locks on the door was a work.
So do we feel that this is, um. Appropriate to adopt this, this evening?
Well, I know for, what we do in our thing is it's some, some policy, we usually let her do for a month.
Okay, we can do that.
So, just so you gotta, I didn't read, I'm not opposed to the policy, it's just, sometimes it's good practice just to let everybody see it. Wait for the next meeting and vote on it.
Sit on it, it'll be on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that's what I would propose. Just, I haven't read every word. And again, as a policy, we could change it at any time we want to. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay, let's, let's go with that recommendation, so that would be seven.
This next meeting, yeah, whatever that is.
Seven, nine.
Nope, eight.
No, it's Monday. Oh, Monday, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking of a different meeting. Okay, so we'll.
Cause I'm good, I'll finish reading through it.
So think about it.
I like you, I kinda glazed it over and it looks good, but.
Yeah, I, I read it quickly and I said, oh, this is all pretty standard. Okay, so let's turn to the, the meat of the meeting here, really it's the town highway report.
I went over and see Grizz this morning. Must be after you did.
I stopped by too, just.
Before he headed out. I see he'd been out and did.
He was headed out on the grader for sure, yeah, I mean, with the storm on. Thursday night, the roads got torn up again. And I, I know that Tim and Greg Parkers headed out to West Woodbury, and there was, was it a culvert that couldn't handle the water and the road was washed out? They spent a good part of the day.
That was today?
That would, no, that was Friday.
Oh, Friday, okay.
I don't know if the road was impassable, but.
I know Harry, is that the one where Harry called me on it?
Probably, yeah, because Greg mentioned that you had called him about it.
Yeah, Harry had called me and said that the road was washing out, not too far from the town lineup, so it must've been on a corner. And he suggested they go up there with some cones, you know, just to warn people and. I called Greg and, and he said, first I, oh man, I gotta come back to Woodbury to get some cones and. Then he called me back in five minutes, hey, just remembered, I can go over to the town garage in Hardwick and grab a couple cones, so. But he must've, did he go back out that?
They went back up on Friday to fix it.
Friday, yeah.
And apparently Hardwick was working on the road further down. So, and then Peter did some spot grading for different roads that had been gully.
I think Peter goes through with the grader.
I drove around on quite a few number of roads, just checking out other roads for them, if there were any bad spots. There were spots where the ditches on the side of the road that washed out pretty good or.
Yeah, there's a lot of spots around, I see Grizz, like I said, he did.
He's, yeah, he's on.
He did some of, some of the Cabot Road.
Cabot Road.
Town Farm Road.
Town Farm Road.
Today, that's kinda rough.
Yeah, Greenwood washed out completely again. It's bad.
Greenwood.
Yeah.
Road.
Green to Labor, they gotta, the problem, well, we'll get into the.
On the corner?
No, the whole thing, because it's all berms, so the water was just running right down. It washed the corner again.
County Road Extension, you mean, down past Greenwood Lake?
Well, yeah, it's, the whole thing from Greenwood to County is trashed again. It's not impassable, but there's, there's a problem area from Poplar Road down through, because with everybody. Used to be there were places you could do cutouts, so that, put that on the list. That's just past my mother-in-law's house, just before you get to the real sharp turn is.
Between Wayne's.
Yeah, it's my mother-in-law's. Right there, the water runs out of the driveway and then it goes right down the road and then it, it runs across and then. Because the berms are there and the ditches are up so high enough, the water can't get off the road and it runs all the way down and goes across. By the gorge, there's a wicked rut right there again.
I don't feel, will it be, will the grader tomorrow, you think?
Yeah, they'll, I would imagine that.
Rain coming.
The Town Farm Road.
Oh, yeah, probably not, yeah, probably not tomorrow, you're right.
Yeah, it hasn't rained yet, but if they, yeah.
The thing is, if they, if they, the road is freshly graded and it rains, then you've got basically muddy grease on top.
Which is one of, I may, I've got this list, is what I, I've been doing quite a bit of study, so I had the right words. Because some of our problems that we're having is caused, if we could fix this. And that's what I wanted to talk about tonight, is how we direct that. I don't know the answer exactly.
So I would imagine Grizz will be grading quite a bit, this, you know, Valley Lake Road, the. You know, the water stayed in the ditch on the side of the road, but it did, you know, wash into the side of the road, so.
Yeah, because that was, did that get graded up and over, because that was really.
It has been, it has been graded, yeah, it's been graded since, but, you know.
It washed again.
Washed again, Sheridan Hill, kinda the same way, that the water channeled into the ditches, but there was so much water running down that it did. We ran to the side of the road.
Talking to Grizz the other day about those little berms that they're putting in the ditches.
The dams.
The dams, and he doesn't, he doesn't like them either, for the same reason, because they, they plug and then it kicks the water out in the road. He said, we're better off before without those. Keep the water in the ditches.
That's one of the things that the, that the state wants you to do.
That's the best management practice.
Yeah, because they don't want you to line a ditch over four percent, has to be lined with stone. Or has to have check dams every fifty feet.
But it's, it's, it's heavy. And that's what they're saying, we got a two-man crew, we don't have enough people to maintain all these things like this, so. We're better off not to have them. And, because they're gonna fail. You know, it's just, they're gonna keep failing and they keep failing, so get rid of them. And let the water go down the ditches like it's supposed to go. The check dams are just causing.
We shouldn't line so many with stone, which they want, again, this is where I'm struggling.
Has to be a certain slope.
Right, well, I don't think it's a law, but it's a best maintenance practice. Because we may have to.
It isn't a law, you're right, but it is what is, you know.
We're gonna have to use a little more common sense and not just, this is what they want, this is what we should do.
Because I'm struggling with. You know, they put stone in the ditches and then in two years it's.
Yeah, they get a lot.
Dig all that stone out, throw it away.
And that, but that is basically what the state is, you know, requesting, so, yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pick and choose that, maybe the, the slope is right for one thing where you gotta do it, but another one isn't sharp enough.
Yeah, well, yeah, these best management practices, there's a certain percent of slope where.
Right, four, four percent's where, less than four percent, you can grass them.
Yeah, and then more, I think more than eight percent or more, the stone is supposed to get bigger and the check dams.
You'd have to use check dams, but a lot of those places, I don't think you gotta do that, but. That segues us back into this is. I didn't go place to place, but this is looking at the best management practices and then what I'm not seeing taking place. Which is creating a lot of the problems, when you read the, the cause of all the problems I noted below, it's caused by. Some of the things we can control, some of the things we can't control much. But I know we're not, like, like I, Greg's not here today, but that, when he told me to take the crown off the road in the winter time and then he put it back on. That's a bogus practice, I don't know where that came from, you need to maintain that four to six percent crown year round.
Yeah, maybe something that he learned from Harry.
So that we need to, so what I'm trying to get at is, we, if, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at this, but.
I have.
We need to start addressing these things as they're grading. Because of what I'm seeing, it's, it's, uh, we're almost to July and most, like my road, they've hit it once with the grader, they came back. The other day, but missed it again, and I've got horrible mess down there that just, again, not, you're just using it as, as an example. And Greenwood was an example, just when you've got berms, what happens is the water is washing right down, it's going all the way and it's ending up in the lake. And on Lord's Beach there, is, is just one example, and I just use it because I'm close to there and I can see it.
I, I think, you know, with these major storms that we have, they really haven't. Been able to do any of the summer maintenance, I mean, we had the May twentieth flooding and, and, you know, a couple of weeks to kinda catch up with that and.
There has been some messes this year.
No, so that I'll give them, but what I wanna get to, is like, we need to instruct, don't, you, we, we need to maintain this four to six percent crown. Or slope, because some roads you just slope to the side, you don't always have a crown, but a four to six percent crown or slope. Every time you grade, I don't care if you only grade fifty feet of the road. These are the two biggest ones, insufficient crown and secondary ditches, so when I say secondary ditches, they're meaning. That's the technical term for those berms.
The berms, yeah.
You know, we've got, even when they just did the Crown County Road, or the Cabot Road, he got out there a lot further, but right beyond there, it's still a secondary ditch. Because if you go the edge of the road here and then you've got a big berm, so.
Which doesn't allow the water to go off.
I guess our instruction should be, if there's, I think they got a crown gauge in the grader. To just tell, oh, I guess that'd be Grizz right now because Grizz is not around, but. When you're grading, go make sure you've got at least a four percent crown on the road and then he, again, graders are supposed, when you get to an intersection, it's supposed to flatten out. When you transition, you've got areas, but most of your road should achieve that, that crown. And then, if he can't pull those ditches, pulling means pull that organic material out. They've got to come up with a plan. Because it's bad. And those are the calls I'm getting, I'm getting from the usual suspects, but they're not wrong is the issue. I don't wanna say. You guys can't do this, I just wanna say if you need training or if there's something that you need to make this happen.
No, I know that Grizz knows how to do that and I know, and I know, um, Greg Parkers does also. I know Harry didn't like to use the grader to clean out the.
Really, it's the only way that'll do it fast enough. Because there's some places where you're gonna have to put that grader, because I, I call it healing the ditch, where you put the moldboard way down in. Your road should have that nice shape to it. And we don't have that, and that's what's happening, is the road's the lowest, and when you plant the grader blade here and then bring the road up, the water hits this. And it just runs right down the edge of the road. And that's what we're seeing with all the gully washers and washouts, it just exacerbates the problems, they need to move that thing. Way out into the edge and pull all that material into the road.
But it's almost like this year, they've been chasing storms.
Correct.
That's, that's what they've been doing.
They just haven't had the opportunity to.
Right, what, what, the problems of, over the last couple of years, I was thinking, I think it's up to us to say.
This is what we, we want to see.
Need to start from tomorrow on, or month, you know, that you've got to do it this way. You know, because again, using my road, you go where they didn't hit, there's a real big low spot there and the water just sits there. And, and there's, there's, so you have to wash out the environmental, but we're, we're paying for all this gravel that's washing everywhere. And so what I think, um, I, I guess, if we showed them this list. And say, how are you going to address this, does that seem like a?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, we can ask, how are you gonna address it or?
We can correct this, or we can write a list of, I really wanna get away from writing a work list, you know, so what I'm saying is that. You need to address all of these issues.
Yeah, you can go over some of this with Greg in the morning, probably.
With Grizz I can, yeah, and he, I, I mean, I know he knows this stuff.
What I want them to say is, we have serious issues with, we need an X to do this because of, or we need.
We need some help with this.
Whatever, because I don't really into that, for me, it's easy to say, oh, just, and that's why I'm trying to be fair, it's like, just do something, because I know. Just flap your wings and fly to Europe, but, you know.
Because there's times that they're just chasing their tail.
Correct, and that's understood, yeah.
But when they get to their regular maintenance of this, this is kinda what they need to do.
Because the top two are the most important, actually, I mean, the, the secondary ditches and then cleaning. Uh, cutouts, cleaning ends of, you know, even if you get out with a shovel. I realize you're not gonna be able to go to every culvert every time you grade and pull it out with an excavator, but. You know, what you got to do is make a path for the water to go in and out.
That's what your radio's for, the culvert, the other guys back in the shop.
You gotta shovel, get out of the truck, shovel, like you, you had in cleaning, that's what you gotta do.
Yeah, and the culverts have definitely been a problem this year, and again, with these heavy, heavy range, you know, there's just a lot of material that builds up.
Because if you can keep the water flowing through the culvert, it keeps itself clean, once the end builds up. And the water can't get out, that's when it backs up and all the leaves and crap get in there.
And this probably isn't just this year's problem.
No, no, this is not just this year's problem.
We're seeing the tail end of.
Several years of not getting done, and it attaches back to when Harry was here, is when this kinda started and I, what my feeling is that. Probably Greg was taught how to do it this way, but like, no, no time should we have no crown on the road. You know, it's gonna wear your plow blade funny and that's just the way it is, I talked to a couple of the road departments, I wanted to understand. What that means is, oh, you're gonna have a, you're gonna wear the.
Except for behind Greenwood Lake, probably places like that, you only slope.
You're gonna, some of it would slope, um, some of it would slope to the lake, because that's another real.
For it to go.
Right, there's, there's a couple of culverts that they know are bad, that were having really bad washboarding and rutting, you know, caused by water sitting there. So they've either gotta come in and get those culverts done or, or they gotta, because what it, what it does when you don't get the water off the road is it just. Within a few days of, the water sits, it just destroys it and you're back maintaining, maintaining the road again and again and again. And I think it, you know.
It's more gravel.
More gravel, more time, more hours.
Do we have good gravel now, do you know?
Yeah, yeah, all the, all the pits, all the pits are making gravel, I mean, they definitely, they're, you know, with the different. Weather events that we've had, um, there are times that everybody, you know, the gravel, they just run out. But they're all, they're all crushing as fast as they can and.
And I'd like to see them pulling as much of, there's a lot of gravel on the edges that I see just burned up.
That's part of the summer maintenance is using the grader and pulling that, um, gravel, and that's the reason that we like to use gravels. Winter sand is if there is a lot of, uh.
Fine.
Fine and pebbles.
Which I wrote at night, because that's where that gets mucky, because what, what I'm seeing, uh, when I've watched the grading is not enough passes to mix that material. Because we're watching how they're supposed to grade, you wanna have the blade angled where it's gonna roll that material, you need to go make a few. Because what happens, you dump sand all over it in the winter, then in the spring you need to come back, pull the gravel up from the bottom, then mix the sand back into it. If you don't, you get that muddy slippery, which is what we've got on top.
Yeah, that's, that's the summer maintenance work that they do, like, you know, the grading that they've been doing now is basically just trying to get out the. Channeling from the heavy rains and all, they haven't really gotten into the summer maintenance and, you know, and with our grader, which, you know. Is, as graders go these days, kinda small, um, so it takes them. You know, where it might take Greensboro with the monster grader that they have, you know, one pass to do a particular.
To go down six or eight inches.
Yeah, you know, it takes probably.
Remember those days of Rip, yeah, when you, you had that driving over the winter road, when he was digging it out.
So again, that may segue us into the discussion of planning for a new grader.
Oh, yeah, we definitely, if we had a, you know, and again, it's, you know, I was wanting the better tool, but. If we had a, a larger, more powerful grader. Then the time period for doing a stretch of road would be much shorter.
So it really. They dig down and get all the ruts out, because a lot of times you're just cutting and filling, which, what has to hap, what reading of road maintenance one-on-one again is at one, what you're gonna reshape the road. Again, happily in the spring, but it hasn't happened this year, not of their own making. Which solves a lot of these problems.
With our grader, if you try to dig too much, the tires just spin. So you gotta, you gotta kinda work your way down, so it takes a number of passes, but.
So that's maybe something, we need them or us, I'm not a grader expert, to look at. Potential candidates and how this might occur, because we've, you know, it all molds into our truck, I know we're making the last truck payment. This summer, and we're gonna, might be needing to get some of these purchases spread out, so, you know, we're gonna have to buy a truck and then push one of those trucks.
I know, I know Greg, um.
So we're not paying for two or three at once, in my opinion.
Parkers occasionally will find a grader, you know, one of, either a federal government website or. You know, you can get a, a pretty good. You know, you can get a, a pretty good grader without a lot of hours on it for about a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, it would behoove us to kind of have a plan in, within the next few years, um, you know, when one of those graders turns up. To jump on it and, and, because that, that would help a lot having, um. And this grader is pretty old.
It's a 94.
So yeah, a new grader is definitely something that.
This isn't a four wheel drive either, is it?
Yeah, see, that's, so it does seem like it may be a wise.
Yeah, it would help. It would help, um, this, this type of work would, could be done quicker, more miles of road per. Summer season could be done.
Like I said, something that's heavier, you could do it in less passes. They could get more miles per day done.
Exactly.
Because right now they're chasing.
Yeah, because I just, we just want to get the conversation switched to people being pissed off about the road.
Yeah, I'd rather look towards a new grader than a brush cutter.
Well, this, this actually, I'll talk a little bit more about this when we get there, but.
So I'm, we can get to that. So, so are you okay with passing this on? I'm not trying to be a.
No, no, I, I, there's nothing that I disagree with here.
This was just pointing out, I've done quite a bit of study and research what should be happening. And I think it's our job. To direct that in a polite way to start with, and hopefully. All the folks will jump right on and say this is great.
You know, the grading is one thing, figuring out a way to keep up with the culverts, you know, this year has been, it seems to be a particularly. Bad year for culverts and, you know, it just, um. And I know that's been an issue, the heavy rainfall.
We've had a good culvert maintenance program, but this year it's just, it's the rains.
It's, it's the rains and the amount of sediment, the wood debris. Yeah, yeah, they've been, you know, culverts have been a major focus.
Backside of Greenwood.
Yeah.
Because that's bad, those all the way through the corner and all the way down. I got culverts coming right up through the.
Where the culvert washed out with the, um, April 20th flooding. They had plans to immediately continue down County Road towards your place.
Right, I know.
And then there was, um, what hap, something happened on the other end, so they had to move the excavator up. And right now it's up on Scrivner Road because, uh, there were a couple culverts that got plugged there and there was flooding the road. So that was in the.
Because I can understand their frustration of me running my, my yap. You know, I'm not out there. I get that. So it's not my intent. It's just.
Yeah, they've probably got 30 culverts on their list. It's, it's where, which ones, which ones first. This one plugs up, so we go do that one and the next one to it.
You're putting out fires. It's like, oh.
Right, putting out fires, right. So, and you know, Griz was on vacation for a couple of weeks, so. He's back. Greg is on vacation now for a week. So, you know, the last three weeks have. Been using our part timers quite a bit.
Yeah, and getting both part timers on that grader.
Right.
Get both of those guys trained to grade.
Peter's been on it. I don't think Tim has.
We want to make sure you spread that to both because you don't want. One person to leave and you've lost your person that knows how to grade. You want to have multiple people that know how to do that stuff. In my opinion.
It's hard to do it this time when we're behind.
Right, right.
There, there will be a time when midsummer we get caught up and then they start training.
And it wouldn't hurt my feelings if he had someone in the truck right behind him, for example, to shovel, shovel the ends of culverts out.
I know him and Tim were out together today. I don't know if Tim follows him around and does that or not, but.
Yeah, and I, I saw Tim go by the house before I left for work with the bucket loader. I'm not sure. He was headed off to do something.
He told me he'd been doing something. He told me, we had a call this afternoon. He said, yeah, we're headed this way to do something.
Yeah, it's been a horrible year.
It's been a bad.
I hope the rain stops and then you can get it. But I think if we get them on this. Right, from now on, as they go forward.
It's something to think about. Okay.
Get on it, yeah.
While we're doing this, maybe we should do this here instead of running off to.
Yeah, I'm just, what I'm saying is when you grade this piece of road, when you come over to grade it, do it to this standard. Even if it just involves a couple of guys who shovel, shovel the end of the culvert now. That's all we can do right now. I understand it might not be the best, but. Yeah, it's what we can do right now. Pull as much of the ditch. I know they make equipment to, you can put on the grader to help pull. These ditches and mulch some of that material. And I don't know if Greg's looked at any of that. It's a. I found a mulching attachment that just goes along and it pulls that grass, chews it up and spreads it out across the road. A lot of it'll dry and then you can, it'll just blow away. But I, I can look it up. Again, because some of this is going to have to be recognized for, for getting it done. There's just not enough hours in the day.
Be nice if something like that could go on the loader. So they could be grading and then the loader just could go along and use that.
Yeah, because I saw someone using that on, on a video and it was a mulching, looks like a disc harrow that hangs off the side. Like instead of the grader blade, you put this down into the ditch. And it looks like a harrow and it just spins this stuff up into the. Road, separated the gravel from the green stuff. And then if you've got too much green stuff, you can scoop up the green stuff. It leaves the gravel. I'll look it up. I didn't get that far, but.
Yeah, never, never heard of a tool like.
I didn't know it either. I was looking at, what the heck is that? Oh, it's a ditch recovery.
Grader and put that on. It's probably not worth much for trade.
Might not attach to the old grader.
Might not attach.
Okay, yeah.
So you'll pass this along.
I will pass it on. Yeah, I'll, I'll share it with Griz tomorrow.
So we've got, and it's not intended to be.
Right.
It's just, that's what you need to have done.
And I'll share it with Greg when he's back next week.
Yeah, just for him to think about while he's going down the road.
Right.
Maybe I should make one more pass or maybe, who knows?
Well, it's really important when they're, you know, at some point, they got to mix all that material in. That's the tough stuff.
What I know, like, when they, when they're doing the summer maintenance, one thing that, um, I like. I'm remembering from last summer, the Greg Parkers would be in the bucket loader and he would be scraping up the berms, especially if there's a lot of grass and sod. It's kind of.
You've got to cart it off, yeah.
Carting and then loading it into a truck and the part timer will be hauling it away. And then. Um, Griz would come afterwards with the grader.
Clean ditch.
Yeah, they could clean it.
They'd clean it out first.
And now, you know, with the stones, you know, like Valley Lake Road. Um, the part that's eroded really badly, that was something, um, that had been ditched and stoned. A few years ago before the, um, you know, the municipal roads general permit standards were put into effect, you know. Um, Harry knew what they were coming because they'd been talking about it for two or three years. So any ditching that they were doing, he was doing it to the standards. And that ditch is now, you know, that's a lower section is full of gravel.
Yeah, what do you do? It's, it's like ruined stone.
Yeah, the section above, um, that they did a couple of years ago, that's fine.
And that's where it washed out on the Kirk's Lawn, right?
That was, that was from the April 20th flood. And what, what happened then was that the snowbank and the ice were basically. You know, the water couldn't get to the ditch, so the water just ran right down the road and gullied it out really good. Of course, you know, Kirk's Lawn, right where the, you know, water likes to go straight and here's.
Did they finally get that cleaned up so he was happy?
Uh, well, it's cleaned up, but who knows?
He's never happy.
I, I won't go.
Put it here, leave it there.
I'll share it after later. So, but it's all cleaned up. It's been cleaned up.
Is that part of the being in compliance in 20 years or whatever the state said? Ditches on the side of the road, we have to be compliant.
Yeah, that's going to make a real issue because the stone is going to be so expensive. Because the fix is dig all the stone out and either screen it or throw it away. And screening requires a screen with water. You've got to wash it all.
It makes it.
It's going to be a huge expense.
Foster Hill Road now, which was ditched quite a few years ago, and within line of stone, it's totally filled with.
Right, so it's a.
I gotta do it over and over. Except with a two man crew, even with subs, it makes it difficult.
Because we're in the old days, you just roll that ditch in with the grader and move on.
It, you know, and another problem, you know, with hyper seeding would put getting grass in there. What, if you can get grass to take. That's great, but you know, like on Valley Lake Road, that bank that they ditched, um. They had that kind of burlap sacking cloth.
Try to hold the bank.
It's a part of the road that never gets any sun. It's forest floor. It's probably pretty acidic. Grass doesn't grow there. Plus, plus the bank is pretty steep. So, you know, what do you get to take root in there to, um, to hold the bank?
Yeah, you just fight regulations.
It might be worth, you know, I should maybe call, um, Jim Ryan is the person that's kind of overseeing this whole roads thing and, um. You know, because these are problems.
Bring them in and say, can you tell us what we're supposed to do with this with our two man road crew and our minimum budget?
You know, it's, you know, these standards are great, but you know, for big departments with eight, 10 guys, but that two man crew. We just can't, don't have the time.
We don't, I mean, to, to wash that stone, you need a basically a wash plant. You're going to bring in something to dump it in, shoot it, pour water on it and the stones will come out clean and the sand and then, but you need a pump, you need hoses, you need a whole wash plant.
That's every year you're going to have to clean that ditch out. We don't have enough time in a year to do that.
Or the stuff to do it with. Your other choice is to dig it up, throw the stone over the bank.
By the way, the old timers did it, always worked. The ditches were open, they were grassed, the water ran.
So maybe having them come and say, we did what you said, or they'll show us where we didn't do it right, maybe, I don't know. And.
This doesn't work for us.
Show us, tell me what you want us to do because we want to meet the standard, but now over here, our road is washing out because our ditch is full. And we can't clean it. We have no way to clean it and put stone back in it.
The upper part of Foster Hill, which was done last year to the, that was the grants and aid with the municipal roads general permit. That looks okay right at the moment.
And it's probably some of the areas it will, we won't have a lot of trouble.
Near the top might be okay because you're not getting as much material.
It's the top half.
Tough areas you're going to have.
They didn't, you know, ran out of time to go further. Plus there are two segments of that road that are hydrologically connected, so that's the towns. Coffers that pay for that. And then further down it is connected. What, why they consider.
This is, this isn't.
Two sections not connected, but the two sections below it are connected, you know, and the water's coming from.
From the top.
Yeah, I don't ask. That's engineering stuff.
Well, the two sections below actually directly run into a stream by Gary Ewan's, so that's probably how they do it. You know, most of it's done from aerial satellite. But anyway, yes, so I'll.
So you'll pass this along and then we can talk to Greg next time he comes to the.
Yeah, we could talk more about, I'll, I'll.
There's a lot of this. I just want them to say, this is how we want to. Address this, but you need to address it. All those things have to be addressed some way. If it's a longer term fix, it needs a plan. You know, in my opinion, that's kind of a Greg spot. Because we'll keep having the problems. Some of these ditch issues will be resolved with. With the correct road profiles. Some of them, not all. There's lots of places you're not going to get a ditch.
Because we got a lot of water around here.
And we have a lot of steep hills.
We got lots of steep hills. It's a very bad company. All right. Brush cutter 101.
Okay, so, um, this is something that, um. Greg, actually both Gregs have been thinking about for time and every now and then they'll find something, um. Online. I think they, I think they saw this device at, um. The, the road show or something, but. What, you know, the deal with the mower is that, um, one year we rent it for a week. And basically we rent it for 40 hours. They have a clock on the thing. So we have it for a week. It costs us $3,200. And then the next year we rent it for two weeks, so we can do a second pass, costs us $6,400 or whatever. So. We're spending $9,000 every two years. Let's say, yeah, nine thou, roughly $9,000. On the rental part of it. So what we were, you know, one thought that I've had is that, um. If we were to purchase something like this and we could work out a. Loan arrangement, and I'm thinking with the union bank, I, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Randy at all about this. Where our payments were basically what we're paying every year to rent a tractor. You know, we could have this tool. It hooks on to, it's made especially for cat. For the bucket loader that we have. It's an attachment. Um, it's a flail, basically a flail chopper. It can do both mowing and brush cutting. And we would have this tool that we could use whenever we wanted to during the summer, rather than the one week that we've, you know, registered for. We could work on, it could, could be used to, to cut back the brush. Um, the bottom picture is the thing extended out.
Reaching out.
Reaching out.
The only thing that, you know, this may be your super, it may save us money in the long run. It's last year when they did their brush cutting for their rental, it looked horrendous.
This is a mulcher job.
So whether, if, if that's just our guys or if that's the equipment, that's, it just needs to be a better job.
So I went and watched the video on this. This thing will mulch because we have a ton of the. Uh, stuff hanging that this could get. My question for this, because I agree with Brian, whatever we do. You got two things you got to consider, not pissing off all the neighbors, cutting their bushes. Number two, whatever's done afterwards, it can't be in the ditch. It can't be in the road.
Yeah, they got to clean it afterwards too. They haven't, yeah. But you were seeing, you know, trees.
Oh, yeah.
It looks awful. And this would basically chip, I think, pretty much.
So my question with, is this company, would they? Give us a, uh, demo or a month lease or something to try one out?
There's probably a video of it.
There is a video and.
I've seen the video.
Okay, it's pretty impressive. I think, does it, does it have the video connection?
You should watch the video. They're pretty impressive. So my question would be, would this company give us a lease before you buy? Try before you buy type thing?
We can, it's still all being researched. We could request that.
Sometimes this stuff is, I, I, I know. My father lives in Charleston, Brownington. I know they use a piece of equipment like this. And it works very well to keep the road edges back. But, uh, if they give you a try, you know, 30 day trial or something and with the intent to purchase type thing, you can try it out and see. Potentially before you bought it and then go, geez, this didn't work or whatever, you know, I know.
Well, there must be places that have got this around.
Well, that's, that's the other thing that we haven't found out yet.
We could go check out.
Because I'm not opposed to it on the face of it. It's just, I'm like Brian, it's just. It's expensive and if it, keep the edges cut back routinely and keep the ditches clear and.
Yeah, keep it clean, not a mess.
I'm good with it. It's just.
So, um. We could see if they wouldn't be willing to allow us to try it out.
Always throw it out there because sometimes they'll give you an expensive, a piece like.
The trouble with trying it out is it's probably going to cost us money to get it attached to our.
Who knows? Yeah, we'll find out.
There, there's a joystick that has to be placed inside the cat.
It may not be something they do, but.
Yeah, it'd be tough to do.
And the hydraulic hookups would have to, yeah. But we could, um, what Greg was going to try to do is find out if there are other towns. That have this, that are using it and so that we could.
Go look at it.
Go look at it, um, talk to the road crew that's using it.
Yeah, because he's right. You know, you could use this anytime of the year.
Yeah, I think it would do a lot better job than a mower because the one I saw, you know, you could make. Using, I walk along County Road a lot. There's places that it's just shrubs and nastiness and this thing would just go right through there. Two passes. Then they could get in there with the machine and pull all that gravel back out where the ditch used to be. For example, because part of our ditch maintenance problem we're going to be running into is the brushes in the way first. This, some of what I'm asking there is not going to be easy fixing.
Now, does this blow the chips into a bag of some kind?
No, it just leaves them right on the ground. They have a picture, I take a whole tree and just mulch it right in the.
And Skip and I took a ride last year after they got done and there was trees half snapped off and it just, it looked terrible.
It looks awful, yeah. And that's what people complain about. Every year where there's the two year, the two week. Second pass, it just, it does look awful.
So, yeah, if we can do this and keep it maintained.
Definitely are behind on the brush cutting.
And I think we could finance this. Through the, through the, through the union bank and, but not adding anything to the budget, we would just be, we wouldn't be. Expending for the rental.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
We could use that. It's basically $4,500 a year that we're spending on for, to rent the tractor for. So if we could finance it so that we're making a payment of like $4,500, I mean, $4,500 a year.
Yeah, I'm not against it either. You know, I think that maybe in the long run. Once we get it here and get to using it and to.
Because eventually you're going to get more caught up and it's going to be shocking. What you're going to do at some places, you're going to hear complaining initially. I know.
Something like this, we don't use the loader every day in the summer. You could throw a sub in it.
You could just throw a sub on there and head out and be launching to cut.
Training one to, to mow good.
Rainy day project.
Rainy day project.
Add a rain.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
And we'll find out, you know, again, I'd ask the two questions maybe. Would they give us a demo potentially? And if not, we can look at it the next.
Yeah, or let us know what other towns might have this if we could go look at theirs even if we have to.
Okay, all right, so we'll continue.
In favor of anything, they'll get the thing caught up in.
Yeah, because it is, it's tough for the two weeks a year or one week a year, whichever we get it for.
It is, yeah.
And they're in a hurry to do it because they got it for a short time.
And then until Friday, so that's five miles of road left.
And it's not, it's not like you have it. You know, you're basically restricted to the 40 hours too.
Right, they go by the hour now, but.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a, there's some kind of, there's some kind of meter in that thing.
Of course there is.
Forty hours is, is it? Okay, well, um.
It's not shockingly expensive. That's one end of a stretcher.
Relative to cost.
Yeah, we've got, our loader is big enough for this.
It is, yeah. This, this, this particular tool is, um, made for this loader. It is, yeah, this, this, this particular tool is um, made for this loader, and it's made especially for the cat loader.
Short bucket comes off that easy?
Yeah, it does, yeah, just a flip of the switch.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yeah, this would be super.
And I think you just latch into this, there might be a couple of connections.
Hydraulic connections and, yeah, yeah, electrical connection.
So you could drop and get out of it pretty quick.
It would have its own joystick in the cab.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, we'll look into this a little further and see.
Yeah, I'm not, well, I mean, anything it's gonna, I was gonna look up this mulching thing and see what kind of money they're talking for that, because that might help their lives. I was like, wow, because what it did is it separated the gravel out of the organic material, and if you, you could just scoop up, all you had was organic material, didn't, you left the gravel.
Yeah.
If that's working, and that, and those hooked right on the grader, they made one that hooked on the.
Loader.
Yeah, but I'll look into it.
Okay. So um, do we wanna switch over to paving stuff? I have a, a paving thing too, I'd like to show you.
I want to talk about town parking lot, so if we're gonna talk about paving.
Yeah, no, that's our man, yeah, that's why, that's why I brought it up.
My guy who's supposed to come hasn't, he's out of state.
Okay.
Again, I, I'm at the point where, have you guys been to the town parking lot?
Yeah.
It's actually getting dangerous, so I think we're gonna have to do something.
Right, okay.
So my, I would suggest we, I don't have a template RFP.
I have the template RFP for the lower part of the Cabot Road, the, um, of course, the deal with that is, is that it was a special mix of catum.
That's why I was hoping to get a paving guy in, you know, maybe by the next meeting, this guy will have.
Okay, we don't need the special mix on their side, or do we?
I don't think, well, I don't think we do, I mean, what's there now looks like it was typical driveway, you know.
Yeah, it was just in there's two or three layers, but what happened, the water got under it.
Yeah.
Now it's just, oh my god, there's holes in there.
Since, since the flooding, it's definitely.
Tore the heck out of it.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, I'm glad we didn't spend any fixing it, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're saying that I can have maybe Chuck go over there with his excavator and do some cleaning out of that brook, I will let Chris know that.
Well, um, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, Jaren Borg did give us permission.
Okay, up to ten yards, that's all you're gonna get.
Ten, ten cubic yards, I think, is what he said.
Lot.
That's a lot, yeah, and it's never gonna be measured once it's out.
Right.
Do you want it, if you, if we took it out there, do you want it anyplace particular in the town, or just wherever we got paid to put it?
Check in with the road crew on that, they might have an idea, I mean, we could fill in the hole at the store with a little bit of.
What I read was, we're eventually gonna dig our site out over there by our house, and uh.
Oh, okay.
What I've discovered is you need to put it in the upland, non-wetland area where it won't be subject to.
Right.
Wetland issues, or you're not, it's not gonna erode into some stream, so wherever we put it, it just has to go, there's no special permit needed for the dumping of it, it's just, just dirt and rocks. But just, you can't dump it in a stream, you can't be in the wetland, things like that, is what I found out.
Yeah, like, you know, sometimes the town will dump um, right off the uh, the parking area where the old um. I think it looks like there was an old gravel pit there at one point down over the bank.
Parking area for.
The town garage, where the town garage.
They've been hauling it up to uh, this new house at the bottom of Two Blake Hill Road.
Okay, yeah.
Tim said they've been hauling the material up here.
People are always requesting fill, so we know they're.
Because we're, we're working on where we're gonna take our material when we dig it out.
Yeah, because I had to, I got a pit, I could dump it down back, but the shorter distance, we would have to pull it.
Unless you have to truck it, where it's able, the shorter distance trucking will cost you money, you have the excavator time, but the trucking is expensive, you gotta go.
Yeah.
So um, if we were to pave the village, what you call a village square.
Right.
I think that's a good term for that, I've been almost trying to.
I would call it, that's what the, that's what the D paperwork calls it, the village square, the town square. I would say it needs to be done right across the end of Valley Lake, because that's busted up, and all the way around, and I.
Pretty much from the, from the building that used to be the store over.
Well, even the entrance, um, maybe we could break that up, and there's a, that's what I want to talk about, there's a giant pothole.
Oh, where the potholes always come.
Maybe, maybe he can uh. Patch that one pothole, because I know we're looking at paving Valley Lake Road.
Yeah.
But at the very least, from the edge of the store all the way down around the side, and I know.
Yeah.
There's potential to put that water thing in there, but I think for now, we need to fix the pavement.
Yeah, if, if the pavement, hey Phoebe, if the pavement is um. This is what, this is someone from Regional Planning Commission told me, is that if there's pavement there, and we have to break up the pavement to put in this catch basin.
They will fix that.
Then part of the reimbursement would be for putting the pavement back.
Fixing it, so I, that's why I'm kinda going, and, and then we should just go ahead and do this.
Right, yeah.
I was saying wait, but it's so bad, I mean, we're trying to drive fire trucks, I drove in the other day, bang, I thought I was going right through the windshield.
And I think when we had the fellow from Pike come to give us an estimate, it was nineteen or twenty thousand dollars for the square.
And I think if we write the RFP, we're gonna have to have them pull it up and regrade, whatever they gotta do and paint it.
Well, the town boys said they could go over there with the loader, tear all the paper.
Do they have enough time, that's the issue that I'm concerned about.
Well, the subs, I would think, should be able to do that.
We could, we could ask them.
What I was gonna ask you to do is to price out the removal separately, then we could.
Okay, yeah.
So what I do with expensive projects, I try to break it up so you could pick and choose.
Yeah, but it'd be, for me, it'd be a great project for both subs.
Okay, yeah, I'm not objecting, just pick it up.
It's a good learning experience for them, Timmy and.
Tim and Peter.
Peter, both, get them up there and.
So I'm willing to work on that RFP if you can get it to me.
I have a digital copy of that.
Because what I'll do is when I get the quote, I can use whatever language the guy gives and just plunk it in there.
Yeah.
I've written long ones for fire trucks, I just haven't, if there's a template that talks about, because of the things like the workman's comp and all that stuff.
Okay, so I, I have a very basic quote from um, the fellow from Pike that I can also send to you, and whoever you're talking to, we're gonna need to do.
My company's just a parking lot paving, a smaller outfit, so why don't you, that'll kinda give us a range.
Probably be a cheaper.
Yeah, so what we can do then is we'll, because we obviously, it's more than our, what is it, two thousand dollars for having to go out to bid?
Uh, it has to be over, if it's over eight thousand dollar.
Which this will be.
Has to go out to bid.
So that's why I say we'll put it out to all these different people and see what happens.
Yeah, there's a lot of little companies around, it might be hungry.
From one thousand to eight thousand, what we're required to do in the procurement policy is get three um.
Quotes, quotes, I'm pretty sure we're gonna be over the eight thousand.
We are, we will be, yeah, we will be.
But when the guy comes, I'm gonna ask him about just patching the end of Valley Lake for now.
Yeah, how, yeah.
Because it's a big pothole that we should patch.
Now, if we do the center square, you planning on going up toward, after your small annex building, go further, or up to the school?
Well, that's a different issue, I was, I, I think not, unless it's our choice.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It's not a lot more, it'd probably be cheaper to do it in concert with this, but.
We got two quotes from Pike for, one for the village square, and one for.
Which you sent us, I have it.
The bottom of Valley Lake Road, from, basically from the school down to Route fourteen, and they were both, you know, one was nineteen thousand, the other was twenty thousand, so we're looking.
No, they're both about the same. That's a possibility.
Forty thousand dollars.
So is there, no, so we could.
And the um, and I don't, the only thing that might, you know, with the other, there's another catch basin that's proposed for kind of right behind the annex building. And then um, then off the school parking lot, there'll be that kind of wetland collecting basin, which wouldn't really impact anything on the road except for heavy equipment going in and out, so um.
I wonder how far up we could pave without impacting that basin thing, because if the town crew dug the road down.
We would, we would probably wanna stop it right at the annex building.
At the end of it.
Where, you know, the little drive that goes kind of behind over to the skating rink.
I wonder if we could sneak it just up to the far end, because those elevations aren't gonna change much.
No.
Because I'd really like to, regardless of this plan we're working on with the fire truck, keep us in that annex, it'd be nice to fix that. Because we had a huge trouble, well, I'll look at it and see.
Because we have to lower that road anyways, because it's, you say, it's quite a bit higher.
Yeah.
So it'd be a nice.
I'll work on this probably.
Okay, all right.
Come up with something, it may not be by the next meeting, because my problem is getting actual people to come, I have been working on it, it's just a matter of getting someone to come. I started looking for patching people, and then it, it.
Yeah, and you know, it, it may be too late.
Yeah.
Maybe too late.
Don't get anybody to.
Yeah.
But I think somebody might be.
Somebody, yeah, some of the smaller, you know.
Yeah, it's something they're gonna buzz in, especially if we've got, got all the pavement up, they're gonna come in and spend a day, two days.
Yeah, because they just gotta make sure it's compacted and smooth and just regrade it, and we want them to fix that little, there was a strip that the water ran down there, because a lot, there's not much dirt there most of the year.
You mean the swell, the kind of.
Yeah, there's a little swell, just gonna have to fix that for now, and then when someday we'll do the other thing, potentially, and uh, if that happens, and. We'll kinda solve that problem. I was gonna see if they could take a little bit of the, it's really too steep to plow, it doesn't need to be.
Oh, right, yeah, it doesn't need to be quite that.
Doesn't need to be quite as abrupt, I mean, that really, so the plow rides, and then that fills up with.
Yeah.
I think it was a good idea.
Between the road and your annex building.
Go around the side of the building, look at the post office come down, and there's a gully, and see where the plow just digs.
Between the post office and the firehouse.
Diggs right in, and it just, it was a good idea, I think it's just a little too much.
Yeah, so we could, with gravel.
Yeah, just bring it up just a little bit, and I think they're gonna do that with that other thing anyways, they'd probably bring that up so the water goes in their new.
Yeah, I don't know quite how that catch basin.
If you wanna see one, right at the Route fourteen bridge, you have one, that's what.
The new bridge in East Montpelier?
That's one of those systems, it's got stone where excess water goes around.
See the line, it's too bad we didn't get to see it put in to see.
It's, it looks like a big septic tank.
Yeah, that's exactly what it looks like.
Filter, and then you can see where they did stone, so excess water, my concern with those things, how much is it gonna be to clean them every year? Particularly, like the village, I don't think will be a huge one, but the, all that dirt coming down from Valley Lake, if that fills up every six months.
Yeah, most of that should be, most of that is channeled on a ditch on the other side of the road, and then it runs, and if it go into the school parking lot thing, which should catch. The bulk of what's coming down Valley Lake Road, according to the.
So anyway, I'll work on that, and uh, again, part of this, whether we pave it up, we don't need to get them in, last year we just tickled it, we, we need to dig that road down.
Right.
It was a mess again this year, and uh, even if we dig it down, and then it comes back up, up above, just to get our road low enough where the water will go by.
At the annex building we're talking about.
Yeah, oh, and that guardrail they gotta fix too, it got tore up with the bucket loader.
Oh, okay.
If you look, I haven't, I was giving, we're having a hard time getting in there to hit that hydrant, because the guardrail end is down around.
Okay.
Greg knows about it, but it's, again, it's not, to me, it's not super high on the list, but it really needs to get fixed this summer, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we'll see, see what this person that you're talking to.
I will find out, if I get, getting people to come nowadays, every company is stretched thin with salespeople, so you want, I want to spend a hundred thousand dollars, can you please show up? Nobody comes.
Yeah.
Another paving thought that I've had, um, and I think what I would, I mean, I'm getting concerned a little bit about this stretch of paving here, and that there are quite a few cracks in it now, um.
Start sealing it.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, um, I went, well, it was summer before last, I went to the road show, and there's this company that um, basically will cover the whole road, they basically, instead of.
Sealer.
Yeah, instead of sealing the cracks, they just cover the whole thing, um, and seemed like a great idea, um. So I'd kinda like to see if they can come and take a look at the hill here, um, and just give us.
Anything that could save it, because we don't have to redo it.
Rough idea of how much it should cost. I thought it would maybe, um, maybe get Shauna or somebody from V-Trans to just say, okay, yeah, this, this should, we should deal with this soon. Because I don't, I don't know much about pavement.
It washed out again up near the top.
Yeah, that, I think we could just fill that in with some stone.
Stone again, and the boys were talking about it this morning, I don't know if they were gonna get to it today or not.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of a scary looking ditch, right?
It is, yeah, that's, they just fixed it.
So, you know, I thought if you, if you guys thought this would be worth looking into, I'll, I'll give a call.
Yeah, I would.
And see, see if we can get this guy to come. Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll do that. And then, um, let's see, just for other road stuff.
Surely I forgot to bring my notes. Trying to see if I forgot anything.
Yeah, trying to think of, you know, we were talking about the last Thursday and the flooding, we mentioned the Cabot Road, you know, I'm gonna, there might be a response from Sha, but um. We should, I'm hoping that we'll hear something from them soon about, so I'll, I'll basically send an email at least once a week to.
Yeah.
To try to, to try to get a response on that, um. So as Laura mentioned, Herrick's Cove Road did get fixed, um, what else do I have on my list?
And we gotta thank you from the people down there.
Yeah, I definitely like that, it's perfect.
They were, they were delighted, yeah. Let's see, uh. I know we have um, sent in a letter of intent for another round of the Grantsonade general permit um.
Yeah.
And we're planning on working on the lower part of Valley Lake Road that's in such rough shape right now, um. So within the next week or so, probably after Greg Parkers gets back from his vacation, um. Dan Courier or someone from the Regional Planning Commission will come out and look at it with us.
So that'd be from the school parking lot down?
No, this will be on the other, the western side of the hill on Valley Lake Road.
The bad. Where Kirk's is.
Yeah, um, there's this upper part, um, where it starts dropping down toward Kirk Lance, um, that was done two summers ago, and then that bad, it kind of ended right at that bad curve. So from the bad curve down to Kirk's, um, that whole section of road, there are three hydrologically connected segments, you know, one side drops right off to the brook. And the other side is basically the side of the hill, well, that's, that's what I'm waiting to hear.
Looks awful, yeah, you guys tell me.
Yeah. Not a lot of options down through there.
There isn't, um, but I, you know, of course, because of the erosion concern, what they're gonna be concerned about is, you know, you can't slope it to where the brook is.
Right.
So it's got to slope to that ditch, so that whole, the ditch down, which is now, was ditched and stoned once, is full of road gravel, and um. And then there is a culvert that catches it pretty much towards the bottom, which um, did plug up from road, um, you know, and that's, I think, part of what happened. To Kirk Lance, and then there is a turnout just below that culvert, um, which Greg has cleared out some, and then, you know, I don't know. Now if that's an issue, because that's Kirk Lance property, um, whether Kirk is making an issue or not, um, but that turnout has been.
Because there's no choices there, where it's, the water's gotta go downhill, and it's gotta get kicked off onto his property.
Same problem over to the, the turn on Greenwood, the driveway, if you, where the water used to turn, if someone's driveway, so they raised it up, that's focusing all the water down the hill. There's no options, we had a few places like that.
The system now on Valley Lake Road is that it does run down pretty much, the ditch, pretty much down that stretch of downhill, and there's a culvert. Um, that catches it, goes under the road.
Is it, is it possible when that guy's coming to come look at the Greenwood County Road intersection, that's really bad, it washes out every single time we rain.
Right on the sharp corner, you're talking about.
It's starting at Popular Road, that just, it washes out, it runs across in two or three places.
I know where Popular Road now is.
Yeah, it's, it's bad, the water comes out of there, and it's, it's rutted on both sides, and they come and grade it, they just grade it like it's all.
And it washes red.
Gone again, and they go down on Bob Lord's, or it's Kevin Lord's beach now, and it's all down there, and it's in the lake.
It's kinda, kinda looking like now he's getting free driveway gravel down to his.
Well, they keep, yeah, well, his thing is all washed out again, and it's, it's all, it's the same thing we've got at Valley Lake on the bay, it's all this, just this big thing, all the water's coming from three angles and all running down there. Again, I would, we're gonna need some engineer to tell us.
I know Greg, Greg Parkers has talked about that spot, because there's no place to get it off the road the other way either.
Right, it's up against the bank, and there's a culvert there, but I think it's too high.
Yeah.
The only thing I can think of to do is you're gonna have to tip the road toward the bank, run it on the inside, and lower that culvert.
Right.
The, one of the problems over time is that intersection keeps widening out, widening out, widening out, and that's something else I don't know how to fix.
Well, I know that was, I know Greg Parkers was trying to address that.
With the sticks, but even on the lakeside, they keep, that keeps moving over and over. Which, and every time it does the widening, the problem gets worse, because we have no place to run the water.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know how you make it smaller again.
It's just another one of those places, you got, it runs downhill.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, I don't.
The pond is right there.
And there's ledges and driveways, there's just no place to put it, and I think there are some fixes, just like the backside, so maybe that guy could come and look at both.
Yeah, I mean, when, when, if Dan is here, if it is Dan that comes, hopefully it will be.
Because that's a real problem area, it's, it's just washed right out, you can't even, there's a big rut right across the road, and over the banks gone, and.
Yeah.
And if you come back and put it, I mean, it does it with just a relatively gentle rain now, it's just, it's.
Well, maybe there's some time in the near future that I, you could show it to me.
Sure, yeah, just let me know, I'm around.
And I can let him know.
This week's tough, but after.
Yeah, it probably will happen sometime after the fourth.
That's fine, yeah, it's been going on for, it's been, as I've just watched over time, you know, the first they fixed up Popple Road, then they moved in and fixed the driveway where it used to just be able to send the water right over the edge. Now I see what they don't want it done, cause it's washing the driveway out.
Driveways are causing a problem, that's another, and that's a whole other kind of hornet's nest, you know.
Yeah, and given it, yeah, this one didn't need a driveway permit, cause it already was a driveway there, but it was camp, yeah.
Yeah, I know they fixed Scribner Hill Road and there's a long driveway, you know, driving, checking the roads on Friday, there's a long driveway there that you could see where the sides of the driveway were, you know, eroded. And then all that water ran into the town road and really hollowed out the ditch on the side of the road, and so, you know, you know, it's, and there, I know there are roads along Cranberry Meadow Road and Dog Pond Road where there are driveways that constantly run into the road. In the wintertime, it's water that runs in and then turns to ice and, so.
We're getting such rain events, it's awful.
And I think that's what we should probably anticipate.
We're gonna have to just deal with this, cause it's not changing, I don't see it changing, so.
Laura, could you flip on the lights?
I'm sitting here in the dark.
It's getting a little darker, so, yeah, so, yeah, I'll try to maybe get Dan over to look at that one.
Or if he's around, you know, yeah, just.
Okay, or I can let you know when he's, when he's coming up and.
Do my best.
Okay, so I can't think of anything else. For the road, town highway. I had, I can't find my agenda, but I had a couple of other things written on the back of it. It's, I always, this always happens, here it is, okay, yeah, no, I got them, I got everything right, too much on the list. At some point, somebody's supposed to come in, said he was coming in June, but I don't think he's come to do the catho ray test on our underground storage tank, that's been scheduled.
Oh, really, do that every year?
No, it's, I think it's required every three years or every five years, but we were doing.
I think they were, did something to it last year over there.
Yeah, last year, we were required to put in a overflow warning system.
Ah.
So, which, it's like a whistle, a vent pipe thing.
You know, we talk once in a while about just putting it above ground in a bunker, that would save us a lot of testing and stuff.
Yeah, we looked into that pretty seriously three, maybe three years ago, and it wouldn't have cost a lot of money to get it out of the ground, and then what would happen is you'd have above ground tank, they wouldn't have to do the once a week test.
You bought a double wall fire guard tank, you could, don't even need a burn for it.
Right, yeah, and then, and it would be basically the, whoever we contracted for the fuel, it would be doing all that.
They would own the tank essentially.
Yeah, so they would monitor it.
Yeah, I heard it one time, somebody offered to put one, a tank, above ground tank over there for us, no cost.
Yeah, Harry, Harry had looked into that, yeah, and I guess we just decided, well, the tank's fairly new, there's no issues with it, you know.
How long has the tank been in the ground, that one?
I can't tell you, but not that long, I don't, I could, I think there are some records, there's a big envelope hanging by the door, I think there is a record of when that went in the ground, but, you know, but it's, the catho ray test, there's, it is a double wall tank and what it does is it, it somehow, they're sending electricity through the tank itself.
Right.
And whatever, the reading will tell them if it started to deteriorate.
Yeah.
So, you know, when, when it starts showing deterioration, then obviously it would be good to.
It probably will last forever.
Yeah, and I, and I might have somewhere, I know Skip looked into the cost for removing the tank, I might have that somewhere in my, in my files, I could look at that.
It's probably more expensive than you'd imagine.
It was, yeah, it was, it was an expense, but it wasn't shockingly high, if I remember right, but I can't, I haven't even had a figure in my memory for what it was, but.
Or get rid of it completely, what do you need it for the equipment, we, we use the cards, we have Express cards, so we don't even get fuel, we just buy it wherever.
Where we need it.
And what happens is each truck has a card and every driver has a code, so you know who, every vehicle, how much fuel it uses, who put the fuel in it when they put it in, but probably that wouldn't help you with your graders and your.
No.
I was, I was, I was shooting my, what's that?
You're paying retail.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're saving quite a lot of money on retail.
We don't pay the tax, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Saves all your, dealing with the tank business, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and everything else is good with the, the tank, we've done all of our, our testing and recording and stuff, so it should be good. Yeah, I can't think of any, anything else as far as the town highway stuff.
There is a Cooper's hot nest on that backside of Valley Lake Road, you know, right above that sharp corner.
Oh, okay.
There's a nest with babies in it.
Oh, cool.
So, you can see it if you look up.
All right, I'll, I'll look for it tonight.
If they start doing too much right there, that might scare her off right away.
Well, yeah, they, probably by the time they get to it, they'll be fledged, yeah, yeah, cause it'll be, you know, we haven't even looked at it yet and that's usually kind of a late summer, fall project, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I would imagine that they'll probably be fledged in another, probably less than a month, yeah, so, should be good. Anything else?
No.
Shall I make a motion that we adjourn? Any of y'all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, we're done.
Well, that's a quick one.
Seven thirty-five.